I call the meeting to order for December 12th, regular city council meeting. Madam Clerk, roll call please.
The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
Now it's time for the invocation by Cindy Evans-Rohys of St. James Episcopal.
Let us pray. Creator God, we thank you, we are thankful for the city of Newport Beach and for those individuals who serve in elected positions on the people's behalf. With their office comes public trust, so we pray for fair, balanced, and collaborative leadership as the new mayor and mayor pro tem are selected for our community tonight. Endow all elected officials and administrative staff of this city with both wisdom and humility. Inspire them that they may lead us in bonds of mutual respect which form our civic life. Grant us all vision to work for goals and purposes larger than ourselves and the zeal to carry them forward. As we pray for joy this holiday season, we also pray for peace in our times, especially in Ukraine and the Holy Lands. Amen.
You'll please join us all in the pledge of allegiance to this amazing country. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. Madam Clerk, notice to the public.
The City Council of Newport Beach welcomes and encourages community participation. Public comments are generally limited to three minutes per person to allow everyone to speak. Written comments are encouraged as well. The City Council has the discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items.
Thank you. Now is the time for a public comment on agenda and non-agenda items. What do we got out there? Anyone? Jim? Jim? Come on up. Good to see you.
Thank you. Actually, I do not have a comment on a non-agenda item, but I do have comments on two on the agenda, and normally it's the custom of the council to ask for comments as the items come up, so perhaps you can clarify if that's going to happen tonight.
Yes, it will come up as well.
I'll comment then.
We'd like to give you two options, Jim. I think that's fun. Okay. We're moving on. Oh? Please.
Hello, council. My name's Cooper Stroll, here on behalf of Assemblymember Diane Dixon. Just want to recognize you, Mayor Blom. Unfortunately, she couldn't be here tonight, but she prepared some remarks for me to present a certificate to you. Good evening, council. I'm sorry that I could not be here with you today. Mayor Blom, I want to thank you for your service to the city of Newport Beach as mayor. Your deep love for the city and passion for its improvement is evident to all. You've used your leadership to ensure that the history of Newport Beach will not be forgotten. Additionally, you've used your platform to promote nonprofits like Make-A-Wish with your great mac and cheese event. The Assemblywoman is proud to have worked with you and the city during your leadership to help finish the water wheel and break that ground with you. So thank you again for serving this city. The Assemblywoman has put together a certificate of recognition on behalf of the State Assembly to thank you for your service and dedication.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it, and it's a team sport for sure. I just get to steer for a little bit. So thank you very much, and thank Diane as well. I miss her up here. All right, good. Let's move on. Post, we're good. All right, wonderful. Moving right along, as is my style. All right, now it's time for council announcements or reports, and time's to throw an A1 up in this. So what do we got?
No report for me.
Councilmember Stapleton.
Oh, man, I wish I didn't have a report, but I do, just for you, Mr. Mayor, last meeting. I did have an opportunity with State Senator Janet Winn. I went, we hosted a fentanyl town hall here at City Hall about a week and a half ago with Sheriff Don Barnes, and it was well-attended and something that I'm very passionate about. My first resolution on City Council was doing all we can to continue to fight and combat against fentanyl here in Orange County, especially in Newport Beach. And then I also joined Senator, or State Senator Janet Winn. We went on a border tour, so we wanted to see where the fentanyl was potentially coming across. I went with a few other elected officials and spent some time on the border south of San Diego. I also attended and have the pleasure of serving on the Lot Trophy Board. It's all about making an impact in the community with Ronnie Lot, and we gave a Michigan defensive player, Junior Colson, the award Sunday night, so that was well-attended. And then, tis the season, the Christmas Boat Parade is hearing upon us beginning tomorrow evening. I had the pleasure of going out last night with my fellow Commodores and judging on the homes, the Ring of Lights that we did, and I gotta say, if you crane in a Formula One car on Balboa Island, on the Little Island, you're gonna probably win. So, congrats to Jeff Morad for winning. It was a great city, a great community event, and I just couldn't be more proud of the city of Newport. So look forward to seeing you guys on the water this week.
Councilmember Grant.
Thank you. It's obviously been a very busy week with the holiday season, and I just wanted to bring attention to one thing that I did attend, which was the grand opening of the I-405 Improvement Project. It's a generational project that will benefit all of us, all of our children for generations to come, adding carpool lanes and extra lanes to the 405 between Costa Mesa and the 605. And I'm sure anybody who's traveled it recently has noticed all the new overpasses and the new signage and the better flow of traffic, which is the most important part, making life simpler for people and much better for the environment. So it was a great pleasure to join hundreds of electeds from across the state in launching that I-405 Improvement Project, and I was also joined by my fellow councilmember, Yagan, at the event. The other thing I want to do is thank the staff, the very large staff of our city, for the last year of extremely hard work. We worked on a lot of projects, and I don't think there's any city in, definitely in our county and state or even in the nation that has a better staff than we have, and it makes the job of all of us appear, as well as the quality of life of our residents, so much better to know that we can rely on the professionalism of our staff. And I just really want to say that I'm looking forward to another really wonderful year working together with all of our staff here at City Hall, our police, our fire, Public Works, Parks and Recs, everything. Just really, everybody hits a home run every time, and it's hard to imagine doing this without having them at our side. So thank you so much, and happy holidays.
Councilmember Yagan.
No report for me.
Councilmember Avery.
No report.
Mayor Pro Tem.
No report.
And I will just say, if you didn't get a visit, the new 405 piece, just feel free to travel anytime between 5:00 and 7:00, and you can slowly tour the entire new project. I'm sure it'll be great. Thank you. That's all I have. I'm done tonight. I'm not, actually. I've got more. I'm gonna keep going. We're now on to matters which councilmembers have asked be placed on the future agenda. This is a non-discussion item. This one's on me. I have asked the council to consider forming a City Council ad hoc committee to work with staff and provide guidance regarding citywide transit, transportation, parking, and mobility enhancements to foster and improve connections and movement of residents and visitors between major activity areas, communities, and villages. Further duties would be to renew, seek, and identify potential funding sources to support such enhancements, including public and private grants and partnerships. If we could take a straw vote on that, I would appreciate it.
Unanimous, 7-0.
Wonderful. Madam Clerk, please read the notice regarding public comments on consent.
This is the time in which councilmembers may pull items from the consent calendar for discussion. Those are items 1 through 9. Public comments are also invited on consent calendar items. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record. If any item is removed from the consent calendar by a councilmember, members of the public are invited to speak on each item for up to three minutes per item. All matters listed on a consent calendar are considered to be routine and all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. Councilmembers are received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommended in action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the City Council votes on the motion unless members of the City Council request specific items to be discussed and are removed from the consent calendar for separate action.
Thank you. Councilmember Kleiman, do you have any ends to pull from consent or conflicts to announce?
I do not.
Councilmember Stapleton.
I have none.
Councilmember Grant.
None.
Councilmember Yagan.
None for me.
Councilmember Avery.
None.
Mayor Pro Tem.
None.
And I'll be recusing myself on item number three due to real property interests in the property located at 224 Marine. Mayor Pro Tem, we have a motion.
We do, for the third full year and, God willing, my last one ever. I move the balance of the consent calendar with the amended minutes of item number one and Noah's, the mayor's recusal on item number three.
And I'm gonna go ahead and second it, because I never do, and it seems fine tonight. Wonderful. And let's go out to public comments on consent.
Mayor Blom, members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. First, regarding item number one, the approval of the minutes, I was surprised and pleased to see that the clerk was recommending the corrections to the comments I tried to make at the last meeting, and hopefully they represent what I said, and I would just suggest when you yourself read the minutes, you make sure that they do represent accurately what you said at the meetings. I don't always check that. The other item I wanted to comment on is item number three, which is the possible adoption, and it's always possible, not absolutely going to happen, of a ordinance re-changing our rules for short-term lodgings. The council's stated intent in this is to shift the burden of the short-term lodgings from purely residential to more commercial areas. I suggested there might be a change to this that would ensure that that would happen without raising the cap that we have overall for the city, which is something that most of your residents are hoping would happen. I would point out that there is no particular urgency about this. If you actually read it, you will see the clauses at the end. It doesn't actually go into effect until the Coastal Commission approves the addition of the short-term lodgings to those commercial areas, which could be as much as a year from now. So I would respectfully suggest you might reconsider that this should have some extra review and perhaps reintroduce it sometime next year in a slightly modified and better form that will do more what your residents are hoping it would do. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on consent calendar? It's weird, I thought you guys were all here for consent. Any additional council comments? Let's go ahead and vote.
Prior to reading the vote, I'll read the ordinance title for item three, Ordinance 2023-23, an ordinance of the City Council of City of Newport Beach approving a code amendment to Chapter 5.95, short-term lodging, and Title 20, planning and zoning of the Newport Beach Municipal Code related to short-term lodging. The motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
Great. Now the bulk of tonight's meeting, which is current business. We're going into setting the City Council's regular meeting dates for next year. Does anyone need a staff report on that up here? Joe, you need one? He had some questions earlier, so I just wanted to double-check. Okay, we'll go to public comments on this. Any public comments on this item?
Mayor Blom, members of the council, you are being asked to make a decision here about at least one of the dates in November, and since I haven't heard your discussion, I don't know what you will be considering doing. I would suggest, number one, the best thing to keep the meetings predictable is to keep them on the second and fourth Tuesday of the month. If you are going to move one of them, I would suggest that you move both of them to a week earlier. That will give you from October to November, the first meeting will be two weeks apart, and the next meeting will be two weeks apart, and then it will be three weeks to the meeting in December when you're greeting new council members. And I think that would be better than the clerk's proposal here, which would have a three-week interval, and then a one-week interval, and then a three-week interval, which doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments on this item? Great, I'm gonna bring it back up here. Mayor Pro Tem.
Yeah, real quick. So on the November dates, we can't move it forward because November 5th is actually the presidential election, which is why we keep it there. So I would actually suggest keeping it at the 12th and 26th instead of moving it to the Tuesday of Thanksgiving. Any objection to that otherwise? Nope. All right, I'll move staff recommendation with the date staying on the 26th of November.
I have a second on that. Second by Stapleton. Let's go ahead and vote.
The motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
Excellent. Now we're moving on to the portion of the agenda to handle city council reorganization. Now it's time for cheering in the audience and applaud. No, none? Okay. All right, well, that's not looking good for a lot of you guys up here. Definitely good for me, though. This is the time for public comments regarding reorganization, items 11 through 15. They'll only be taken at this time. Jim, come on up. What do you got to say?
It does feel a little strange being out of whatever we have, 86,000 people, being the only person making the comments tonight, but I do have a comment on this. I'm always a little puzzled when these December meetings come along. The only meeting of December, and the principal business of it is to select a mayor and mayor pro tem, which seems to me like not such a big deal, yet it's met with great anticipation, like something momentous was happening, as if it was, you know, we're about to witness a coronation or something. I find that puzzling, because when I look at our city charter, I find nothing in it about coronations, and I find actually nothing in it about changing the mayor in a year when there's not an election held. So I went back this afternoon to look at our city charter to see if anything had changed, and to my surprise or non-surprise, it seemed to be the same charter I'd seen before, and the people who wrote it, what they envisioned about the mayor of Newport Beach was a pretty limited role, that the mayor presides over council meetings, which is something you want somebody who's gonna be collegial with you to do that. They are the primary, but not exclusive, person who interprets or explains the city policies, programs, and needs to the people of Newport Beach, but it's not the mayor's, it's the city councils that they have to explain to us. So that's a pretty minor role, I think. The mayor signs various papers, but he has no choice in that. The papers have to be signed if the council as a whole approves them, and the mayor does have a power to call special meetings and to designate the place to hold a council meeting if this chamber is not available. And then there's a catch-all phrase that the mayor can be required to do anything you, the council, require him to do consistent with the charter. So I looked through our municipal code. I found exactly one additional responsibility, and that is the one to call meetings of what is called the Emergency Council. And for those of you who have not been on the council very long, many of us have been waiting for many years for the Emergency Council to meet, which it's supposed to do, and it never has. What I don't see in the charter is anything about the mayor being designated to set the direction for the city, or that when the city manager has a question, they consult with the mayor and the two of them co-manage our city. I don't see any of that. So it sounds to me like a very routine job, not a big deal, but I know people will say it's really much more than that. So I would just ask, where is it written that it's much more than that? And if it, and why should it be more than that? I think the charter was wise. We elect seven people. We expect all of you to govern us, not one. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. And if it's in consolation, I certainly haven't treated it like it's more than that. So I barely show up to most things, so we're okay, Jim. I think we're doing just fine. If that's the case, if it's a coronation for someone, then am I being deposed right now? Is that what's happening?
I'd like to-
Because I am super happy to leave.
Speaking of that, I have item number 11.
Oh, wonderful. Let's roll in.
So item number 11, this is a fun one. So it's actually, it's a real pleasure to present Noah with two gifts tonight. Actually, one from the city and then one from all of us up here on the dais, but before you get the gifts, I have a few remarks. And just like your stay of the city speech, they'll be brief and mention Keith Curry exactly once, and that was the once. So Noah, Noah served as mayor in a real transition year. With four new councilmembers elected in one fell swoop, he came in on the heels of the most expensive elections in the history of our city, and so we needed stability, and by all accounts, Noah stepped up and led, and I really mean led. Our meetings have moved efficiently, the business of the city never skipped a beat, and we are all better having had you as mayor, Noah. Even more impressively, he did all of this in a year when he and Marin welcomed Sterling into the world. So since Marin's not here, because of course she has Sterling, hopefully she's watching, and I can just simply say to Marin, "Thank you for the time that Noah spent away from home and business so that he could serve, and by the way, thank you, Marin, for being co-mayor of our city. You did a great job." So Noah, on behalf of the city of Newport Beach. You have the scalpel, and you have to take a picture with me.
Oh, oh. Thank you. Oh, with the picture here? Okay. There you go.
And then, one small gift from the council. So, most of you may know, Noah is constantly under construction, so we got him a hammer that says, "You nailed it, Noah Blom, mayor, 2023." Which, by the way, I fully expect Marin to be using to get that restaurant open faster.
Marin will be using this, and I'm gonna give it back to community development. Hopefully, this moves us through a little quicker. I'm just kidding. I love you guys. You guys did a great job over there. So I'm reading on my thing. I'm supposed to speak now, so I wasn't totally prepared for that. Oh, and I'm, thank God. We're gonna jump over to Eric.
Yeah, I wanted just to say a few remarks. I didn't prepare them as the mayor pro tem did, but, you know, during the campaign, you know, a lot of us heard a lot of discussion, and for me personally, I heard a lot of discussion saying that we shouldn't let you become the mayor. And I hope those critics recognize after a year of you being up here that they were wrong and that you honorably served as a mayor, and I appreciate you doing so in my first year, and I look forward to working with you for many years moving into the future, but thank you for your service.
Thanks, Eric. Thanks for bringing up the past. That's good. Just gotten over it. It's okay. I'm just kidding. I have a good time out here. So I will say just a couple of quick remarks, that this has been an amazing experience. It's an amazing city. I promised myself I wouldn't cry, and I'm not going to. But, you know, I think it's an interesting experience when you're put in a position in which you, you're not totally prepared for, which is, I think, what a lot of the critics that Eric was referring to said, but you have an understanding on how you live your own life and how you run your business. And I think I've brought both those things here, and I've had a great time doing it, and I've seen a wonderful reaction from our amazing city staff, from my colleagues up here, and from the public in general. And I think sometimes that just goes to show that when it comes to governance in this country, it's not about if you're bred for it, if you're built for it, or if you should do it. More often than not, it's if you shouldn't do it, you should. And I think that's the call for so many people, is that governing and being part of the process is more about the call to just respond rather than the need to do it. And that's been one of my favorite parts up here, is that I feel like this has been something where I get to add a little bit of my own understanding and know-how about the world, and hopefully that imparted something on this city that it hadn't yet had. So I'm super thankful for my time up here. I'm super sad that I now have to face the guillotine, but I think it's been a welcome experience, and I look forward to spending so much more time with all of you. This is great. So apparently, this is my junior year. I have to go through graduate school also in order to keep doing this job. It's great. It's great. Hopefully, the hazing will be better next year. So with that, I'm gonna turn this over to somebody else. Let's see, I actually have a script here. I have no idea about what I'm doing. City Council will now consider the annual mayor appointment. So I'll turn the floor over to the city clerk. Are we ready for this? Okay, good. That seems super enthusiastic. Let's move on. The election of the mayor. It's too late now. Don't clap after that. That's embarrassing for you.
This is the time for the election of the mayor. All members of the city council are on an equal basis to nominate and elect. Note that seven mayor and seven mayor pro tem nameplates have been created for the reorganization process. The same procedure will also be followed for the selection of the mayor pro tem. Nominations do not require a second. They are not debatable, cannot be amended or reconsidered, and a majority voter is required to elect. The motion to close nominations does require a second. It is not debatable, cannot be amended or reconsidered, and requires a two-third vote. If there is more than one nomination, the voting will be done by paper ballot, and the results will be read at the conclusion of the balloting. If there is only one nomination, the voting will be done verbally. Nominations are now open. Do I hear any nominations for mayor?
Councilmember Stapleton wants to jump in here, but he doesn't get to, because I could still be mayor here.
Go for it.
I'm gonna go ahead and nominate the mayor pro tem for the mayor's seat. Joe, you had it, it was good, but you just missed out. Maybe next time. So I'm gonna go ahead and nominate the mayor pro tem. Do I hear any other nominations?
Seeing no-
Seeing none. Oh, that's you. Sorry. Jumping the gun.
Is there a motion to, a motion and second to close nominations?
Make the motion. We have a second by Stapleton. Perfect. Show of hands.
Okay, nominations are closed. Do any councilmembers wish to have any discussion on the nominations? By a show of hands, all in favor of selecting Councilmember O'Neill as the mayor, raise your hand. That is 7-0. Congratulations, Councilmember O'Neill, Mayor O'Neill.
Give me just a second. All right. So the next item up is going to be the selection of the mayor pro tem. Nominations are now open. Do I hear any nominations? Mr. Avery.
I nominate Robin Grant for mayor pro tem. Thank you, mayor.
Mr. Wigan?
I nominate Councilmember Joe Stapleton for mayor pro tem.
Mr. Blom?
I nominate Lauren Kleiman for mayor pro tem.
All right. Do we have any other nominations? Okay. Seeing no other nominations, is there a motion and a second to close nominations, moved by Councilmember Wigan? I have a second. Second by Councilmember Stapleton. By a show of hands, all in favor of closing nominations? All right, any opposed? Nope. All right. So, madam clerk, real quick for everybody, we have paper ballots in front of us for the mayor pro tem.
In order to be selected, we need four votes from council.
There you go. Sorry. Go ahead.
Thank you, sir. Pardon? Oh, okay, got it. Thank you.
Let's go ahead and vote again.
For round two, councilmember Avery votes for councilmember Stapleton. Councilmember Blom votes for councilmember Kleiman. Councilmember Wagon, councilmember Stapleton. Councilmember Avery, councilmember Grant. Councilmember Blom, councilmember Kleiman. Mayor O'Neill, councilmember Stapleton. We do not have four votes.
All right. Let's go ahead and vote again.
For round two, councilmember Avery votes for councilmember Stapleton. Councilmember Blom votes for councilmember Kleiman. Councilmember Wagon, councilmember Stapleton. Councilmember Stapleton, councilmember Stapleton. Councilmember Grant, councilmember Stapleton. Councilmember Kleiman, councilmember Kleiman. Mayor O'Neill, councilmember Stapleton. With five votes, councilmember Stapleton.
So administratively, we now get to choose our seat assignments. So the mayor and mayor pro tem are actually in the seats they're already in. And then we choose by seniority. So the first person that gets to choose where they're going to sit is councilmember Avery. Where would you like to sit?
Where you're sitting, Mayor.
Fair. Councilmember Blom, next.
I'm pretty cozy over here, so-
Look at you.
I feel spread out and exciting.
Councilmember Grant.
I'll go to the end.
All right. Councilmember-
I'll stay here. I'll stay.
This is fine. OK. Councilmember Wagon? Councilmember Kleiman, you get to stay there, too. So should we do the photo now, or do you want to? Can I do my remarks first?
Absolutely.
OK. So before I make my remarks, I've actually asked my friend and the senior pastor over at Mariners Church if he wouldn't mind coming up and saying a brief prayer. So for the last time tonight, would you mind just standing with us?
Congratulations, Mayor O'Neill. I'm going to pray from Micah 6, chapter eight, Micah chapter six, verse eight, which is a verse of scripture that Jewish rabbis believe is the summation of the whole Old Testament, and then Christians hold to as well as being at charge for how we should live. And I'm grateful for your humble leadership, which is the reason I chose this verse. God, I thank you for Will. And Lord, we remember the verse in Micah chapter six, verse eight, that "What do you require of us but to do justice, love-kindness, and walk humbly with our God?" And I thank you that Will walks humbly, that he's a humble leader who serves people. And I pray that you would bless him in this new season of leadership. I pray also for Jenny and Sean and Aubrey, and that you would protect their home, that your peace that transcends all understanding would guard their hearts and their minds, that you would fill Mayor O'Neill with your wisdom as he serves this city and as he serves the people of this city. In your name I pray. Amen.
Pastor Geiger, thank you. Actually, thanks for setting the tone of humility, because I have a few people to thank. So first and foremost, I wanted to say thank you to the voters of Newport Beach, not just for the privilege to be able to serve on the city council, but to actually be able to serve with each and every one of my colleagues. You've made fantastic choices, and I just wanted to say thank you. Of course, thank you to my colleagues that I serve with for this honor. It means quite a bit, and so I appreciate that. Thank you to my friends and family for their constant support, especially those of you here in the audience and those watching at home. OK, thank you to most of my friends in the audience. And obviously, a very special thank you to Jenny and Aubrey and Sean for being here, not just for being here tonight, but for all the time that you've spent serving the city alongside me. It's usually fun. Sometimes it's not. But you're there, and I love you. And kiddos, just remember, this is your last year of being in parades. So get the candy-throwing arms warmed up. So it's really, it's impossible to sit here tonight without remembering what it was like four years ago, sitting here back in 2019, when I sat here and laid out goals and not really knowing what the following year was going to bring. And it brought a lot. And so I sit here recognizing that I have no idea what this next year is going to bring. But I do know that we are Newport Beach, and that brings with it resilience and really high expectations. So no matter the events of the coming year, we can and we should remain a beacon of good governance in a swirling world of uncertainty, chaos, and outside policies that undermine public safety and property rights of cities like ours. That means staying the course to improve our public safety across the board. So we started that in this past year when we bought the Dove Street property to ensure that we are going to have a state-of-the-art police station in the near future. And it's going to be on us and our future councils to make sure we're saving funds to build that state-of-the-art police station. This year should also be the year that we expand our police department's digital footprint to help catch those who would prey on our community from outside. We've replaced our fire stations in Coronet Omar and Lido Village, and we're going to be going out on a bid later this year, later next year, I should say, to replace the fire station and library at the end of the Balboa Peninsula. And this year will be the first full year of a new ambulance service, which means quite a bit in a community that loves to grow older as it stays, as they stay home, which is exactly what they should be able to do, thanks to the public safety that we're able to provide here in the city of Newport Beach. And of course, in the coming months, we're going to be cutting the ribbon on the new junior lifeguard building. Yeah, that one's a good one. That's a truly momentous occasion in the same year that we're going to be recognizing the sacrifice of Ben Carlson 10 years ago. Which brings me to a discussion about heroes and helpers that is long overdue. Some of you may remember that in 19, I declared 2020 to be the year of the volunteer. The plans were to honor people in this chamber, in these chambers, and those were, that was derailed, as you can kind of imagine with the year that we had. The plans to celebrate people in our chambers, although derailed, that year showed a spirit of volunteerism that has been more obvious in this city for the last few years than any I can remember. That spirit was crystallized for me this past year, actually, when I read a biography of a childhood icon of a lot of us, Mr. Rogers. And one of his most famous quotes came in response to an interviewer asking him how he handles the hard realities of this world. He responded, "When I was a boy and I would see scary things in the news, my mother would say to me, 'Look for the helpers. You will always find people who are helping.'" Here in Newport Beach, we have a whole lot of people who are helpers, people who run toward the danger, who aid the marginalized, who sit and hold the grieving. We have people who experience loss and tragedy and wake up in the coming days looking for ways to serve this world and make it a better place. My hope is that my council colleagues are going to help identify the helpers who deserve our recognition, and frankly, I hope you do, too. Let's celebrate in these chambers and at places like Oasis, schools, community groups, and more. And if you were here four years ago, you remember that one of the things I like to do as part of these speeches is actually recognize someone else for the things that they do for our community. So we're going to start tonight with a ceremony that has not happened in the seven years that I have been on the city council. Tonight, we're going to give a key to the city to someone. Someone who's exemplified what it means to be a helper. Someone who's invested in property and business and in the lives of so many who live here. Someone who spearheaded the effort through the Noble Vikings to raise money to bring Tora, a support dog, to the Newport Beach Fire Department. Someone who, despite having his livelihood threatened by the restaurant closures in March 2020, still figured out a way to help his employees, low-income seniors and Newport Beach residents, thanks to his business connections. Someone who many throughout Orange County know and even more claim to know. Someone who is married to the amazing Ashley and the father of two spectacular young ladies. Someone who came from humble beginnings, but he learned through his immigrant parents a hard work ethic that led to him being named Newport Beach's Businessman of the Year last year. And someone who, until five minutes ago, had no idea why his whole family, including his parents, are in the audience. Ladies and gentlemen, it's my honor to present a key to the city to our friend and yours, Newport Beach resident and businessman, Mario Morovic.
All right. One, two, three. One more. One, two, three. Perfect.
So Mario, congratulations on the key to the city. You are welcome to say whatever you would like within the bounds of decency.
First off, I'm speechless. I had no idea this was happening. And those that know me the best know that I don't like surprises. I tell my wife all the time, do not surprise me. And my good friend, well, actually, this morning, I woke up at four in the morning to go to work. And I got home, and my good friend James called me to coordinate so he could pick me up to drive me down here tonight. And I was debating staying home and taking a nap or going to watch Will become mayor. And he convinced me to come down, so I'm glad I did. Walking in here, I walked in, and I saw my parents here. I'm like, God, so many people that I'm really close with are here to support Will tonight. And I just want to say, you know, Will had mentioned, you know, the trials of getting through the start of your term as mayor and how difficult it was and how scary everything was getting through COVID. And the one thing we know about Newport Beach is, in times of adversity, people come together and rise to the challenge. We mentioned how, when Noah became mayor, the stability that happened this past year. And the one thing we can think of when we think of Newport Beach is we think of strong leadership. We think of stability, and that's why we all want to live here. We moved my parents here from Orange. My sister lives here. My entire family ended up in Newport Beach because it's such a great community of people. Looking out in the audience, seeing all my friends and family here, one thing we all have in common is we're very appreciative to be where we're at. So thank all of you for your commitment. I appreciate it.